I'll make a motion to amend and then approve the minutes of the May 22nd as listed on your agenda.
I'll second that motion. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye, so carry. All right, at this time we have a service recognition for five years for Raymond Todd. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thanks, Ray.
I was just telling my supervisor, I'm sorry, that I was only gonna do this job for five years and here I am with no ending sight, so yeah, I'll go a little while longer.
That's good.
And we are truly grateful.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item number six as listed on your agenda.
Second, motion for item six by Commissioner Warren sent by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the cash disbursements electronic transfers. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven?
Motion to approve item number seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco sent by Commissioner Warren to approve item seven, which is the seminar request in page four, seminar request. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eight as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item eight, signed agreement between professional services with MCM Group. Questions or comments?
Can you give a little detail on that, please?
Yeah, the, what this is, is it's the GIS mapping system. Right now, currently, we don't have a real GIS mapping system.
What is GIS then?
It gives you the latitude, longitude of every house, every road, every facility in the county.
Why do we need?
911 needs it for a response for emergency services.
Doesn't the address do that?
No, the address is just an address. You can't pinpoint it on a map, the address. So in order to pinpoint the address, you need the GIS to get the coordinates. So which is what the fire department and all the ambulances and everybody use. Any other questions? Yes.
And what is the actual cost? $127,580?
Yes.
$580.
Right.
And that's coming out of the regular budget or is that coming out of Act 13?
Act 13 fund.
Act 13 funds, and why is it considered an Act 13 fund?
Because it's one of the items that legislators created that says that mapping, GIS, and 911 can be used for Act 13 one.
So that might be the reason why when I call the police about an incident, they don't know where it is, they usually ask me for directions, so they need this extra mapping?
Partially, yes. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number nine as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item nine as listed. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 10 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item 10. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion.
What?
I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 as listed on your agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item 11 on the agenda. Knowing of the dam, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Motion to approve item number 12 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item 12 on the agenda with Eco International. Questions or comments? Yes.
So this is for recycling of electronics?
Yes.
And don't we have that now, or how is this different than?
We do. It's a contract that we have yearly with them.
And how is the recycling plant going? Has anybody bought that yet? You put it up for private?
Hasn't been put up for sale yet.
Oh, hasn't been put up for sale?
Still being analyzed. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 13 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item 13, contract with professional services from Flint County. Questions or comments? Yes.
Please explain this. We're having a firm from Pittsburgh doing vetting for employees, prospective employees?
Mm-hmm.
Don't you guys do that, or some committee within the county do that?
Well, as far as doing the physical background checks, the federal, the state, the multi-states, we don't have the ability in the county to do that. And that's one of the issues that came up. We checked with other counties to see what they're doing, and a lot of the other counties are using this firm to do it because they have the ability to do self-all states and do the background checks. As far as regular background checks, as far as employment and things like that, this is looking for felonies and things of that nature.
Couldn't we coordinate with, is there no way to coordinate with Pennsylvania from the police, whatever you call it?
Uh-uh. Then they don't handle it.
I thought I just might-
And it's not just Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania could do Pennsylvania, but they don't do the other states.
I couldn't have sex to, what are they for if, I don't know, the employee?
Well, they're for employment.
I just wanted to mention that Pittsburgh area, that is like around Central for the federal investigative thing, so it makes sense it would be coming out of Pittsburgh because the records are held there.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 14 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item 14 for the purchase of new vehicle. Questions or comments? Yes.
Is this an additional vehicle to the fleet?
Most, I'm not sure of the answer. Most likely it's gonna replace another one of the older ones. And I think that's the case. It's replacing all the ones that's out of service. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 15 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item 15, the exoneration tax claim bureau. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 16 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. This isn't, this is another Christine Jones, I think.
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to acknowledge the hiring of Christine Jones by Judge Jeff Pauls. Questions or comments? All in favor?
I'd make a motion to approve item number 17 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to acknowledge the hiring of Sue Leeser by Judge Kancy. Questions or comments? All in favor?
What's a finance enforcement officer? What do they do?
Do you have any answer?
Yeah.
They do work in domestic relations, setting up the fines and payments and-
So it involves domestic relations?
Yes.
Motion to approve item number 18 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item 18, the hire Sean Isme of Milford. Questions or comments? Yes.
What exactly constitutes his day, his workday?
What do you mean constitutes?
Well, does he ride around looking for bridges that need repair?
Well, no, no. We have, all our bridges get inspected. So basically, we take the inspection reports and he'll take those reports and work with the department heads and the chief clerk and come up with items on those bridges that need to go out to be fixed. Minor things may be taken care of by himself. Other things may get put out to bid or go to our general contractor that we have on contract with the county to go out and make those repairs and be responsible for filing of all the necessary paperwork for the liquid fuels money to make sure we get reimbursed in areas we're supposed to be reimbursed. Also, the documentation of any repairs that are done, pictures, and making sure that contracted work is overseen, make sure it's done properly and that we get what we pay for.
Was it a couple of meetings ago, there was someone who was out of a job similar to this?
We had a person retire that did similar of this work, but did more of the actual physical work than the administrative work behind it.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 19 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to acknowledge the hiring of Betty Phillips Paulson by Mary Evans. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 20 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to accept the resignation of Jerry Bogdanovich from 911. Questions or comments? Yes.
And what is his position if it's Director of Public Safety? Is that involving just 911?
Who are you talking about?
Bogdanovich.
No, Bogdanovich is a 911 employee.
Oh, 911 employee, and then Stoudt is the director?
Yes.
So that's another resignation of 911. It's like every month, right? People resigning.
Make a motion to approve item number 21 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to reappoint following to the Saskatchewan County Tourism Committee. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
At this point, it's done for public comment.
The question I have is, what do you foresee is going to be the impact on the county budget with the Affordable Care Act for non-union employees?
I think it will have a huge impact on, like it's gonna have a huge impact on every business. Everybody's anticipating double-digit increases in the insurance coverage.
Would you consider reducing everybody's working hours to 29 and below?
Well, the problem we have with that is that it's all union. It has to be negotiated with the-
Well, the union you can't do anything with, but I'm talking about non-union employees.
The non-union employees are few compared to the union employees. So the benefit, and if we have the union employees here, we have to have the non-union employees here. The non-union employees are the department heads and supervisors. So those have to be here if the union employees are here. But it's something that we're gonna have to address. Definitely have to address is the healthcare depending on if this thing still stays in place. Now, the only thing I do know is that there's still big pushback coming from the states on this, on the insurance care itself because every state's supposed to create their own insurance company, basically, to subsidize people in the state that don't have insurance. And I know a lot of the states are still doing a lot of pushback to Washington saying, "We're not gonna do it." So I'm not sure if this thing's still gonna go through. I'm hoping that this thing will collapse before the end of this year and Obamacare wants to go in place. But if it does go in place, then it's not just gonna be the county, but it's gonna be, a lot of companies are gonna end up dropping insurance because it's cheaper to pay the fine than it is to pay and pay for the insurance. Governmental agencies are gonna get hit the hardest because of union contracts. We can't get out of the insurance. So it's gonna have a big following, and it's something that we're gonna have to address. And it's something that our healthcare consultants are looking at to see what kind of impacts we're gonna see from it.
Do you have any idea what, well, a projection, I've looked at the last two pages about the drug and alcohol program. I'm sure that'll be effective as well. Are you concerned that you might have to ask the taxpayer to pay for a lot more of that? Or do you not see that coming?
I can't, I can answer for all the commissioners on that. I'm not in favor of raising local taxes. It's something that the state and the federal government should be taking care of. Marianne works a lot with the drug and alcohol and also with mental health. You wanna comment on it?
I can't imagine that we're going to ask the taxpayers to put in more money for it. Could I comment on what was questioned of me and the drug and alcohol?
Sure.
The information that was got, given back to me here for 2011, 2012, we put in, I think it was like $13,000 in that joint venture with Lackawanna County. And the services that were paid out just for Siskiyouhana County residents in 2011, '12 were $375,000. So yes, we're getting our money as well.
Oh, I'm not debating that, but if, when-
When.
If Unaffordable Care Act is fully implemented, they're not gonna be getting these millions of dollars. And we're gonna be hurting, as a county, as much as any other county in the country, if not more, because we don't have a large taxpayer.
Right.
And how about the poor people that are Americans are gonna be fined $2,000?
They need to go to Mexico and come back in.
It's America.
Mike, you're preaching to the choir. You are preaching to the choir.
Any others? Motion to adjourn?
I guess.
I'd like to know if you've had any feedback on your resolution about the underpayment of royalties because of production costs? The resolution that you made, any feedback from the state or your, our local representatives or state representatives?
I've gotten no official feedback, other than what the governor said in his one radio broadcast that, you know, people sign the contract. It's, you know, that's the way it is. I know that Senator Yaw had an article that I saw, he was reported on in a paper, basically saying, "Too bad you signed the contract. That's the way it is." I have talked with Sandy Majors and also through her with Tina Pickett and Lisa Baker, and they're all on board right now. What they've told me is they've got all the attorneys in Harrisburg reviewing it. They know that they can't do anything with the current contracts. However, they are looking to see what they can do to ensure that, you know, these things don't happen, any future contracts. I know that, you know, a lot of time has lapsed. Mike, you got any, you wanna make a comment on that, well?
Well, I got a lot to comment on, but I don't know if you wanna-
Well, can we hear it? Can we hear what you have to say, Mike?
Well, these people in Harrisburg, they need to get pro-racta rather than re-acta. There's a whole list of things that I sent them years ago that need to get addressed. That, the royalty was just one of them. That Kilmer case has been on the book for three years.
And is that a royalty issue?
It's a royalty. It's what set the standards. It's what this resolution is about. They could have addressed it immediately. They chose to ignore it. Pennsylvania has what's called a rule of capture with oil and gas. It needs to be changed.
And what is the rule of capture? Can you summarize it?
Yeah, no, I got it. Let's say this tabletop is a pool of oil, and there's 10 landowners that own the tabletop. If I stick a straw on this end of the table and suck out all the oil and gas from all the landowners on my property, the oil and gas is mine. Now, where this enters us is the horizontal drilling. Let's say this piece of paper is somebody's 10 acres. And the gas company drills a well, I mean, there's a buffer that they have to keep away.
And what's the buffer from somebody's property? Do you know?
They just changed it.
To what?
600 feet, 300, 300, I'm not sure. 300, 600 feet?
300 or 600 feet from somebody's edge of their property?
That's the well bore. Now they frac. Well, they frac. What if they're fracking underneath your property? Well, they haven't, I say they commit a trespass. They say, "No, the rule of capture says that that will migrate, and it's tough luck." The rule of capture is based on the natural migration. It's a Latin term called ferainaturri. It says, based on the natural migration of, when this rule was put into effect in the 1800s, it's the natural migration of gas and oil. Well, once they frac, there's human intervention, which I have said for years, takes it out of the rule of capture. Very simple to fix it. Protect the landowners, protect the people, define and pass legislation to fix this rule of capture issue. Then we go on to the pipeline issue. We got pipelines. I forget how many responses we've had. Say there's been 30 responses to pipeline catastrophes. Our emergency responders, who are all volunteers, are dispatching themselves, sometimes in the middle of the night, using up their resources, using up their equipment. They don't get anything from anybody for that. Why doesn't the legislature address that?
So can you make a resolution and address that? And then give it to our legislators and put some pressure on them?
We've all contacted them. They're aware of it. We just hope they do something.
And then when you say that they can't capture somebody's, somebody's gas, does that mean someone who's not leased?
Correct. What if your landowner's got 10 acres and you don't want anything to do with it? Which, we live in America. You have the right to say no.
Right, there's a whole bunch of people-
Does that give them the right to take your gas? I don't think so. Should that landowner have to spend thousands of dollars to protect their interest in the land living in America? I don't think so. It's not the way we're supposed to work.
The right of capture, as I understood it when I researched it, had originally started with wildlife.
That's correct. Ferainaturri. The natural migration of wildlife.
If the deer is on your property, it's yours, and if it goes to your neighbor's property, it's his. And that's the way it worked. Because it was a natural migration.
Correct.
But the migrate, and the migration of oil and water, I can see because it's fluid.
Yes.
But when you have to frac and actually physically remove-
Human intervention.
Yeah. When you have to do that, yes, it's going to migrate, but it's gonna be after the fact that you trespass.
I agree. You're right. Fix it legislatively. It's very simple. What's wrong with protecting the landowners? This is America. Why do we even have to ask them? I got a motion.
Wait, I have another question. I have another question, please. I'd like to know too, is when we had the Williams Central Compressor Station in Brooklyn the past month have a fire and explosion. I know people there personally, and I spoke with them. I used to live in that area. And they said that they were not notified that there was an explosion or fire. And they would like to know, is there any kind of a system you can put in where you can set off an alarm or make phone calls to people once there's an emergency of an industrial nature? They live behind and near a compressor station that's on 54 acres. It's a huge facility. Is there anything that we can implement through emergency management or some other form to give them notification? Yes, now there's a fire. Now do something if you need to to save yourself because they can't save everybody. They have to run to the facility and do what they can, the emergency people. Nobody was notified. What can you do with that?
Well, nobody was notified because of the nature of the explosion and what happened there. The emergency services thought that it wasn't a need to notify everybody of what was going on. They didn't feel it was life-threatening to anybody in the surrounding area. If they had, then each township, each municipality has an emergency action plan that they would implement it and they would have taken care of.
And what is that a plan like?
You have to check with the township and the municipality to see what their plan is.
So we have to call the town of Brooklyn and ask them for their emergency plan in case it's a serious thing? What do, what would they do? How would they notify the people? So it's not county-based? Remember that special number you gave us that we could call if there's an emergency or you would call us?
That handles certain types of emergencies, flooding, tornadoes, mostly weather.
So can't you put the industrial operations of gas drilling on that list?
Each township and municipality has to have their own emergency action plan. And they're the ones responsible to ensure that those plans are up to date and are active. Yes?
I'm here because of Fund Group, but I'm also a master gardener. I just wanna say this has been a record year for our master gardeners. You know, we maintain three gardens in the county. The Pollinator Observation Garden on Shenango Street, the low-maintenance garden on the Green and then the Pollinator Garden at Hartford Fair. But we've branched out into helping with community gardens. So we've helped with one in Hop Autumn, the 4-H Garden by the Extension Office, which is now planted, and also a garden at Salt Springs. And we've been doing programs. I know I've done one at the farmer's market. I'm scheduled to be there again on Friday, so... But they've been highly visible this year. And it's all volunteer hours. I'm just impressed. I'm a new master gardener, so...
Thank you. Anything else?
I'm gonna change gears. Are the commissioners aware of a federal program called Common Core? It's an education program in schools.
Yes, I am.
Okay. I'd like, if I indulge me for a few minutes, it's very hard to put this into a paragraph. Common Core was thought about in the 60s, implemented somewhat in the 70s, came to northeast, especially New York, New York City school system in the late 90s. It is basically a federalization of the United States education system. Governor Corbett just signed a 30-day mor-, not just, a couple of weeks ago, a 30-day moratorium on Pennsylvania instituting Common Core in our schools. And what Common Core does, basically, it's a top-down plan funded by the federal government, mostly out of stimulus program, $56 billion is set aside from Common Core. 48 states will implement Common Core coming this coming September. Texas opted out, not opted out, Texas got out, Indiana got out. Other states are getting out because they have realized, mostly through parents, mostly through administrators, through state senators and representatives, that you have no control over your child's education. The parent has no control, the parent is not required to know anything. The administrators are not required to know anything except what is handed by the federal, handed to by the federal government. It starts in pre-K. Children are tracked through pre-K, through junior high school, through high school, through college, and into the workforce. The American Federation of Teachers just walked away from Common Core for their own selfish reasons because not only, or not only are the children tracked, they have their ID number, but the teachers themselves are tracked, and they have an ID number. So if Johnny can't read in grade two, and Johnny can't, Johnny and Sally can't read in grade five, then let's look at this standard because every test is going to be aligned with Common Core. If little Johnny has proclivity for music, but the tracking on him, and by tracking, I mean in Florida, they have done eye retina scans in several counties.
Without parent's knowledge.
Without parent's knowledge. They're gonna, Microsoft is in on this. This is a huge deal. They hook the kids up, they check their blood pressure, their brain reactions when subjected to certain subjects. If you're good in math, we want you to be, we want you to take computer science in college. Well, I don't wanna be a computer scientist. I wanna be a lumberjack. Well, then you're not getting a college loan, and they follow you through your job as well. I'm begging you guys, go to Common Core. We'll give them a couple of websites, but you've gotta find out about it. Because once this is in, we did a little homework lately. We thought it was really bad. Now we are terribly frightened of it because once that federal money comes in, and this year Pennsylvania got about $670 million for Common Core, well, what we found out is that Pennsylvania has gotten over $3 billion since 2009. Yeah, big secret. It's a big secret. And the federal government says, "Once you're in, you can opt out, and you're not getting, and you have to pay us back." Well, I highly doubt that Texas and Indiana pay a dime back a dime. That's number one. But the biggest problem is you do not have control, you don't have local control, you don't have community control, you don't have state control. There's only one person controlling it, one group controlling education. This is not political, but I'm gonna say it, I don't mean to be political if I am, or then too bad, but Common Core is a brainchild of the George Soros people, Tides Foundation, Apollo Project, Van Jones people. This is where it comes from. They come in, they do subjects like math and a little bit of English. And it doesn't look like much at the beginning because they're only gonna show you the good stuff. But once you're in for a few years, you can forget about American history. It's not gonna exist. So my point is, it's really, it's worse than you ever thought. And whether you're left, right, center, you are not going to have any input into your children's education. They will be mass-produced. And if they're a size eight, that's it.
Will they allow homeschooling?
No, homeschooling, go on. And homeschooling, well, we have to sit at home. Uh-uh. You have to align to the, every test is aligned to Common Core. Everything in high school is aligned to Common Core. Every college will be aligned to Common Core. every college will be aligned to Common Core. And it's already happened in many states. I dealt with it in New York City. Fortunately, in the late nineties, early two thousands, it wasn't that ingrained and I had enough seniorities to tell them where to go. But that's another issue. Today, even New York City, so I get the, I get the UFT paper and the AFD papers and the NICE papers, even the teachers in New York City don't want it. That says a lot. That, that's it. Look into Common Core. I've spoken to a couple of our state people. One of them didn't have a clue. And the other one, and I don't want to mention the name, said, basically said, "What, there's some good and some bad, but basically, we have control." And I said, "No, you don't."
I did talk to one of the superintendents a week ago about it. And he said, he thought that the information he's getting from Harrisburg is that they might be pulling away from it.
Right, now they are, but they-
The money, the money is unbelievable.
Don't they not use a ticket to fix the pension problem for the teachers?
They can't. But here's the other thing. Once you've signed on, you're in. And this is tied into the Affordable Healthcare Act as well. And it's tied into DHS. It's, 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 it's an insidious cancer. And no one has taken the time. And our two representatives are very sorely ignorant-
Underinformed and misinformed.
And misinformed. And they haven't taken the time and they haven't, they don't believe that their Republican representatives in Harrisburg would do anything to harm the populace. And we agree knowingly they would not. But if you don't know what you're stepping into, you don't have any kind of warning. They're thinking everything is good. It's not. And we've seen Google, Microsoft, Verizon, they're all into it.
It's huge money, huge money to track these. I learned a long time ago, I'm sorry to wax personal, but I learned a long time ago that, and you know it, the business of education is business. Children are asked, roofing, windows, food, computers, desks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's all for the children? BS. It's all for the company business. This business, just this, just in the past few years, is a fixed, fifty-six billion dollar entity.
Do you have a last one?
My last one?
Yeah, well, you've had one, three minutes.
Well, three minutes total.
Do you have something to say?
Yes, I'd like to, yes, of course I have something to say. I'd like to ask Mike if it's below, are they going to allow this underpayment of royalties? Because if it goes, it's going below twelve point five percent. So the state has no objection to that?
They don't have anything to say about it.
They have nothing to say about it? So it's only for new leases?
They sign the leases, they sign the contracts. There are some civil lawsuits in the works to make them accountable to make sure they're only taking what they can take.
Bradford County, some of them are losing ninety percent of their royalties.
Ninety percent of their royalties, so, and that's, so there's no limit on production cost then? There must be no limit.
Obviously, they feel they've got a loophole in the contract that they can charge it.
I see a lot of people going for closure in this county.
Okay. Got a motion to adjourn? You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving.
Oh, where you going?
We moved our offices.
From the building that-
Maggie and Laura signed into that program we were talking about.
Common Core?
To the quarter.
I mean, we just moved up-
So are they tracking?
Two-parted pressure on, on Harrisburg.
And are they tracking our children now in this county? So I've been stacking up twenty years' worth of stuff.
So why aren't they tracking them if they've been in operations? They haven't had the technology. Now they do.
Now they do. And the states who have been in it, who are more involved in it, that's where you get, that's where they start with that.
I'll talk to them.
They're real serious. Hooking the kids up with a wettrance.
They want to put microchips in the kids.
Yeah, that's right. They're going to, they're going to be chipping the kid.
It sounds pretty outlandish.
Can we email you or website it to, over the government, we want it common core?
You can take a look at it. It's the same stuff we have, but-
Just so you can see.
Yeah, just send it over to the office.
It's a little bit easier.
It's odd, so you're going to email. Well, I'm very, I'm very with Common Core because I was-
Well, the point is-
So we, we thought, I was in the school system for a lot of years, so...
But we, we are shocked that our little day number-
So do you think it's actually being implemented in our county?
It's already here.
Absolutely. It's already here.
It's been here for a while.
It's somewhat-
So what are the issues with it now that you know of, from your personal experience? Any negative issues with the Common Core?
Well, the same issue, well, here's the other problem with education in the county. Every, every forty-six years, they change how they want to do everything. So the problem is, is we spend all this money to get these schools to do it in one direction, then six years later, they go-
We're kind of hoping that we can get them-
It's a huge waste of tax money.
I said, we're kind of hoping we can get the constitution restored, but it doesn't look like there's much of-
And the standards drop.
The SATs have been reset some of the times since the nineteen nineties.
Don't worry. Under Common Core-
I used to be a teacher, so we're not going down.
Here's the, here's the issue. Is the standard for math in Common Core?